This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
All right, you all set to begin the meeting? Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, and I'll call this meeting to order. It is 6:04 PM. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What do we do to delay the United States of America to the Republic which stands on nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Okay, and we're going to have Sandy to take role for us.
Should I do the clerk's open meeting statement?
Yeah, would you do that? I didn't pull out my sheet here.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
You don't have to be so nice to me. Why don't you say you forgot?
Next time.
All right, and then we have roll call. Could you do that for us?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett? Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
A nine present. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Sandy. And then I also want to recognize others that, obviously, in attendance in here, you can see who's here, but we have, of course, Aaron Johnson, Sandy Stibbs, Justin Behrens, Andrew Whitman, Chief Brian Hosele, and Peg sitting all by her lonesome over there. And so of the department heads, Kathy is still on leave, although we've seen her. And she's doing well, but she's on leave right now, so she might be watching from home.
I don't see her on the Teams meetings.
Okay, so she probably will at some time. And then our city attorney, Tom Hart, is not here with us tonight.
Virtually, yes.
Oh, he's on virtual also? Hey, Tom, I'm sorry. I didn't look up. I guess I misunderstood you. And, okay, and then also joining us tonight, virtually, we have John Halberl from Acupaw LLC and Adam Stein from Acupaw LLC. They're going to talk to us about the project at the old Pizza Hut building. And then we have some other staff members, too. I'm sorry, we have Jeff Sanders is meeting us virtually. And then Andrew Dean is there with us, too. And we do have in the audience tonight, and they'll introduce themselves later, but we have Fensky, Stephen Deb Fensky with us tonight, too, to talk about something. And of course, it's good to see Angie back in person again, so from the Wapaka Post. Have I forgotten anybody? I hope not. All right, you have a consent agenda. It looks like, Sandy, you have one addition to that.
Under number five, letter D, the list of bills were uploaded to the city website. That's all.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to see moved to the regular agenda where we vote on them individually? Go ahead. Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Against, say no. Motion carried. Okay, and then under regular agenda, Sandy, you got something there, too?
Yes, under number nine, new business addendum was uploaded to the city website, adding letter F conditional use permit for 1080 West Fulton Street. That's all.
All right, so we have that one addition. Anybody else? Otherwise, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Fair, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Sorry, I got to go a little slower. I forgot. Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have National Library Week 2021 proclamation. And it looks like, Peg, you're going to read that into the record for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people. Whereas libraries of all types are the heart of cities, towns, schools, and campuses. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect. Whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise. Whereas libraries, which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy. Whereas libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues. Whereas librarians and library workers partner with other civic organizations to make sure their community needs are being met. Whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information. Whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Whereas libraries provide access to technology and the Internet, essential services in our modern society. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Brian Smith, proclaim National Library Week April 4th through 10th, 2021. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarians. Because of you, libraries transform.
Thank you, Peg. Appreciate that, and wonderful to recognize one of our departments in this way, so thank you for that. Okay, next up, we had a request from Alder Person Paul Hagan to just make a small presentation about the history of Saint, I hope I pronounce this right, Earls.
Yes. I won't take up too much of the council's time in regards to the, but years I've been Saint Patrick on the limelight in City Council, and this year, those of us of Finnish or from the UP Michigan, we celebrate Saint Earls Day, which was started in 1956. For, and Saint Earls was known for sending the frogs out of Finland, so for those of us who are from UP Michigan or anyone else who wants to have Saint Earls Day.
Thanks, Paul.
I realize it wasn't a weighty topic, but I had to get it off my chest.
Is there a special color and flower that you have to wear if you're a Uper?
Well, the colors are purple and green, so it actually was a holiday started so that people could drink longer and drink into Saint Patrick's Day. A worthy cause.
I bet you guys never knew that, did you?
Knew about the frogs, though.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody have questions of Paul on this? Thanks, Paul.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All right, next up, which is in your packet, on the next page is after the library resolution. There is a petition to adopt an exterior lighting ordinance. And you can see that there's a number of names on there. The, let me tell you this, and then I'll open it up for some discussion if you want to at the council level, but we are recommending that you that you just direct this back to the City Planning Commission. City Planning Commission is working on this. And I know motion moves slow in government, and so we are trying to figure this out, and it's taking a little bit longer than the person that requested the original ordinance, and so we're still going through the discussion process, so it's not a process that we stopped looking at, but we are. But I think it's better suited at City Planning Commission. And I know Eric and Alan, you guys are both on the City Planning Commission, so you know about it and know the efforts, and the difficulty it is to to put something in place like this, too, is not easy, so that's where we're sitting. Now, Aaron is prepared to give you some more background on it if you would like. If you're okay with just sending it back to City Planning Commission, I would need that motion, so either way.
I move that we send it back to City Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Keeland and second by Chestnut that we take this petition and send it to City Planning Commission to have further discussion on this ordinance request. Discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to, this petition, I think, is a result of a constituent in my ward, and she cited some examples. And there's an example right across the street from me of a yard light that's on a house that it is very bright, and it actually bothered me, but it wasn't shining at me. It was shining at the neighbor to the north, and they had to put up a blanket on a porch to block the light. This person had the light on their house, did turn it around, so it faces the house, and it's much better. But they're not required to do that. They could have just continued to shine the light. There's nothing on the books to prevent anybody from doing this. I think the constituent that is requesting this has neighbors on both sides of her that are basically doing the same thing, and so I think it's really important that we look at it, and I hope Planning Commission can come up with something helpful.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, we'll just do a voice vote here. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, do we have any public input, anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? All right, let's move on then to the community department head reports. And I'm not sure, is Michelle Drake, are you on virtual here with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, if you want to, so Michelle is representing the Wapaka King and In Between, and she's the community representative tonight, so go ahead and reintroduce yourself, Michelle, and go ahead.
Sure. Tonight, I'm here to share an update, actually, from the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. So thank you for including us as a monthly part of the City Council meetings. I'm Michelle Drake, and I'm Chair of Wapaka King and In Between. We're a group of over 80 shops and restaurants and salons. And we'd like to thank the city for their continued support of both WKI and the Arts and Culture Network. The network started in 2018 as a result of Wapaka's Arts and Culture Plan. We're happy to be part of that network. It has provided many opportunities for collaboration with the city, other groups, and organizations. It's become a great team, and it continues to be important, and I know it has strengthened our community. I'm here today to provide you with an overview of current WKI and network activities. I'm not going to use the word unprecedented, but this past year has been extremely difficult and stressful for business owners in Wapaka. Personally, our two stores shut down for eight weeks about a year ago now. And since reopening in May, we've seen very low sales compared to a regular year. Shops and restaurants have had to lay off employees, dig into their savings, and some have retired early or even closed their business completely. Traffic is still low, and businesses continue to look for ways to encourage shopping until we're back to normal. Throughout these months, we always have felt that we could come to the city when we had questions. Aaron Jensen was especially helpful when we were talking through issues like mask wearing and learning about city and state COVID guidelines, so we want to thank you, Aaron. We also want to share our appreciation for the hard work done to create the opportunities of the downtown incentive project. Aaron and Andrew Dean and others have been open to discussions about ways to grow business in Wapaka and have produced creative projects to do just that. Having those funds available to do building improvements will make a huge difference, and for some will make their business plans possible. During the pandemic, we worked with network partners that are in the Arts and Culture Network to do what we could to still have some of the arts activities. We were a part of the network's Make Music Day, helped with the community art project, and had socially distant chalking event for local kids. Antiques on Main has the new Union Street mural painted on their building. This was coordinated by the Arts Board. It's an amazing piece of public art that will bring many people downtown. This winter, you may have been familiar with the Yuletide Trail. The network forged ahead to create the second annual event in a COVID-safe way. There was great value in the teamwork of the network, which included the city, for it gave us the opportunity to go ahead with the event. In particular, the city and Wapaka Police made the Santa Neighborhood Parade possible. So thank you very much, and the kids thank you, too. Most events that draw people to Wapaka were canceled this past year. So we did small things here and there to connect with customers and did things like perp side service. We want to thank the Chamber and local donors for their Wapaka Area Celebration Certificates that they offered in May. While now we're in 2021, we hoped this would bring a real turnaround, but we're still seeing very low sales. We recently participated in a regional shop hop, which we feel can be a big event that we can do twice a year. This coming summer, Wapaka King and In Between will partner again with the Arts Board and the Arts in the Square to do kids chalking, and each year, we've had about 100 people participate. Looking ahead to the upcoming road reconstruction, we really appreciated the open lines and communication with the city. Thank you to Justin Behrens for attending our spring meeting for a Main Street update and for being available for business and building owners with their questions and concerns. We're all really looking forward to this fall when we can see the results of the project. Thank you to all of you for your hard work, years of hard work on this project. We know it will be a fantastic improvement for Wapaka and will enhance the day-to-day living as well as draw new visitors and potential residents. This fall, the network will be working with the city to update the Wapaka Arts and Culture Plan. We are hoping to have Anne Katz return as our facilitator. Anne is the Executive Director of Arts Wisconsin and helped create our award-winning plan. In our recent examination of the plan, we are pleased to see that a good number of objectives have already been met. Looking back, we can build on those successes. I believe thus far, the network itself is the greatest achievement. More and more, we're seeing the importance of the arts in our community and our economy. Business owners have benefited from the city's willingness to be open to the ideas of an arts economy. This sector has expanded faster than the total economy every year since 2012, and its contribution to the GDP is greater than agriculture or transportation. For Wisconsin, the arts and culture sector impact is currently at $10 billion, contributing over 96,000 jobs, which is more than papermaking and biotech combined. Members of Wapaka King and In Between believe in the importance of the arts and look forward to seeing what the efforts of the network have in our local economy. We really love being a part of the vibrant arts culture that is here in our city. It brings people together, creates a sense of community, and makes the downtown business area more inviting. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update on Wapaka King and In Between and our part in the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody have any comments or questions of Michelle, as we have her here? All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to department head reports then. And Kathy, I see you're up there, so let's start with you then.
Okay, I don't have a report in the packet, however, we've had some things get done while I've been out of the department. One of them has been that we did get all of the employees signed up for the income continuation long-term disability insurance that was approved by council last year. We're starting to get information on the new federal funding. So we'll be listening to upcoming webinars to what the eligibilities are, what the rules are. And I just want to make council aware that if we go over $750,000, we will need to have a single audit, so there'll be some additional auditing expense with the relief act money. But we'll be bringing stuff to council as we get more information. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
All right, Kathy, thank you. Thanks for attending. Anybody have any questions for Kathy? All right, let's move interior here. Peg, you want to go?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, on March 1st, we did open the library for intentional browsing. That really means that you come in with a purpose. And we asked that they limit 30 minutes as their visit. We're also allowing hold pickup in person. Our computers and study rooms are being used. And our teen room is open to, with a limit of eight people. We also have our hotspots and our laptops for checkout. When I looked today, all of our laptops are checked out, but we have three hotspots that are available to families who need to have that Internet connection. We are our regular hours at this time, so Monday through Thursday, 9 to 8, Monday through Friday, on Friday, from 9 until 6, and on Saturday, from 9 to 2. The book sale is open, and our next phase of reopening will happen in early April. And we've really been grateful to the city for following the science and helping us to put those safety pieces in place to make sure that the experience is safe as we can possibly make it. And the other thing, if you didn't read my packet from the last month, is that I will be retiring in 2022. That may be some news to some of you, but you'll see me probably for almost a year next year. So you can still look forward to seeing me for some time. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. Any comments or questions for Peg? Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My report starts on page four of the packet. Starting with the wastewater department, as usual. We visited the Manawha Wastewater Treatment Plant, the entire staff. We did it safely. Good thing about treatment plants is mostly outdoors, so we kept our space. The reason we did that is that their public work staff has kind of undergone some turnover unexpectedly in their short staff, and they're under-certified for wastewater. So we visited them, saw their plant, toured, exchanged some ideas, and we have one of our operators, who actually lives in Manawha, is visiting them on Saturdays every week. He's helping them, ensuring they submit the proper documentation monthly, and that their testing is being done per their permit, and just helping answer questions, and it's just a, we're supporting them, and we're sure that they'll return the favor in the future, just being a good neighbor. This is not the first time that the city has done it. Years passed, we did the same thing with Wyegah when they were short staff. A few of our staff helped them as well, so this is part of our cooperative agreements with our neighbors. Wastewater side, that last note is kind of a longer one. Basically, it's just a nod that we have a, our next important project is with our DCS controls. And basically what it is, our plant has a lot of automation, a lot of probes, a lot of information provided to us by computers. We take that, and then we can make adjustments, testing, and refine everything. Our system is over 20 years old. We've kept it running for quite a long time, but it needs an upgrade. So in a couple of years, we will be undergoing quite a project to upgrade our controls there, our computer programming, get us in today's modern wastewater technology. Big thing on street department, or the street side, is Main Street, of course. We had our public information meeting. We had our pre-construction meeting, and we learned a lot, and we got a lot of information, and we felt we turned around and put that out to the public for them to, you know, to hear what we're up to. If you haven't heard, the project is going to break ground on March 29th, so just about two weeks from now. Starting in the Fulton Street intersection, that intersection will be closed in all four directions for three days. After that, then everything north of Fulton, up past Water Street, will be closed until July, until we switch it over to Phase 2. In the middle there, come May, we're going to shut Fulton Street down, or the intersection again, for about three more weeks. And once that opens at the end of May, North Main will still be shut down. Fulton will be open and remain open forever. So we purposely put in additional staging, identifying that Fulton Street as being a critical piece downtown. It's open, we kept it open as much as we can. Certainly, when we have North Main shut down, people can still use that Fulton East Street intersection to turn south on Main Street. And then again, when we switch over in mid-July to south of Fulton Street through Badger, that Fulton Street intersection will still be open. You can pass straight through or turn up on North Main. We're going to have weekly updates. We're going to have weekly project meetings with the DOT and the contractor, so information will continually be put out there, and certainly, these milestones, as they get closer, will become better into focus. You know, the construction is, you know, determined by production. If they make, if they make a lot of work done in a day, certainly, that speeds up our schedule. If we get good weather, that speeds it up. Conversely, things can happen that slow us down with work and the schedule. But as those things change, we will provide those updates. Other items for Main Street coming up in the near future, we will be doing a sidewalk assessment like we do on all of our roadway projects. That's coming. We're targeting the May timeframe as things get a little more settled down with the breaking ground of Main Street. We also have a piece of Main Street we were planning on vacating on the north side. We are extending that curb from Granite Street to Water Street. So heading straight north on Main Street, up the hill, past Rassellston Park, in the future, will not be allowed. So we are vacating a chunk of that. That's the plan anyways of Main Street. And part of that going to the Danes' Home, and part of that will be going to our parks. Waterside, our towers, our water towers are on the five-year schedule for cleaning and inspection. Seeking proposals right now, and I expect to bring that back to you guys in April. We had a number of water laterals freeze up on residents this last weekend. The weather got nice, and people thought that they were safe. We have several laterals in the city in some lines that are very shallow. And when the temperatures get very cold, the water department knows where these areas are, and they reach out to residents and tell them to trickle their water. When that notice is given by the water department, we give them a credit because of the water trickle notice. Don't turn that trickle off. Don't turn that trickle off until you get notified by the water department. Just because it's 60 degrees and sunny still means the ground can still be frozen at these times. So we had a few of those issues we had to get through, and I just wanted to put that announcement out there. We have a couple pretty big anniversaries. We have Dave Hugner, our custodian, at six years, but we also have Russ Montgomery, who's at 33 years at the end of the month here. And then finally, our new facility, planning our new public works facility. We received five proposals. We had a meeting earlier this, actually yesterday, reviewed them, and we narrowed it down. So the next step is setting up some interviews and interviewing these firms and moving on from there. Eventually, this will be coming back to council for approval, and this is a long process. We have two years built in for design and planning, and then one year of construction, which is, we're targeting 2023. That's it.
Thanks, Justin. Questions? Comments? All right, let's move over to Parks and Rec. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So we also did have some changes at the rec center as far as COVID-19 protocols are concerned, kind of following suit with the library as we move forward. So we had restrictions on numbers in certain areas, such as 20 in a gym, 10 and a half gym. We did double those and raise up some of the numbers in the exercise room lobby and other areas like that. We did open up our locker rooms again, so we do have bathrooms and locker rooms at the rec center. And a little bit of our equipment for limited use is available. What we'll do, if someone does check that out, they have to come through us still to get that, we'll put it in a bin to sit for a while before it gets used again. So those are some of the changes. We've continued to be steady and busy, and we haven't had too many issues. We do have to remind some people about the mask ordinance or the mask rulings, and, you know, otherwise, things have been going pretty well there. A lot of those changes came with discussion from the county health officials, and we've also been talking to them a lot about our programs that are coming up and making sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep participants and spectators safe. As of this morning, I kind of took a look at all of our programs and registrations. We had 471 registrations, and so that's all of our programs together. So it could be 10 people in this and 20 people in that. And, you know, anything compared to last year is pretty positive news, so we'll take that as we go. But we'll continue working with the county to make sure that we have the protocols in place to keep people safe as things progress and move forward. Today, if you remember, we ordered some new park signs last fall. We're not able to get them in before the winter, but the one at Swan Park went up today. I will bring a picture or put that in my next report, and we'll be doing a few more and working to change all those over. If you notice, some of our park signs are getting pretty worn out, dingy, and chewed up by the woodpeckers. So these ones, they definitely will not be able to do that with. So go ahead and check that out, but you'll see those popping up within the next couple of weeks. We're also going to do a pretty big trail sign update on the Riverides Trail this spring, and we'll probably be sitting down with Angie, who's behind me here, to do a little article about that as well. Also working this spring, and I'll be bringing this to Park Board soon, an adopt trail program, so I won't get too deep into that, but, you know, our trails were used more last year than ever, and, you know, we definitely struggle sometimes to keep up with the maintenance through the 30 miles of trails that we have. So we're hopeful that getting the community on board will help us do that. We're working on putting together the steering committee for the Bike Ped Plan that was approved a while ago, and we'll have our first meeting here in the next month or so. Again, that's about a year and a half-long process, and we'll have a few steering committee meetings throughout that, so we're trying to get that first one going as we move forward. Down to the senior center, they've been working hard lately to work on some virtual stuff and getting some of their classes up on YouTube for seniors to use. We're not able to or have decided still not to come back to the senior center, so they have something to do as well. That is about it.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions or comments? Andrew? Chief Fozell?
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be found on page 11. If you remember, last fall, we came to council with our capital. We were talking about the Beast Software Program. That's for evidence-based. What that allows us to do is put barcodes on evidence, so when evidence comes in, we can put a barcode on it, we can scan it. It is compatible with our software system that we use for spillman. Makes it a lot faster for officers logging in evidence, and then also, when we have to submit things to the crime lab, we can use that barcode and we can scan it out that it's going to the crime lab. And the crime lab, at the same time, has the same software system, so when they receive it, it automatically uploads, and it just makes things a lot easier for everybody around. So we're looking at starting that project here, hopefully in the next month, and get the officers trained on that. Also, if you remember from last year, we had talked about, we've always did the Uniform Crime Reporting. That's where we do submit data on all the crime during the year. Well, that switched, we're kind of ahead of the schedule, but we were able to switch to the incident-based reporting, so that's the IBR. And we did that last year for an entire year, and we did receive a letter from the director of the Wisconsin Uniform Crime Report. It kind of gets a little, I say, you get confused with, they're still saying UCR, but it's IBR. We did receive a letter from them congratulating on us for our certification as to the data that we submitted for the year. We also, as the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force that we talked about that in regards to our drug officer that we started last year, which we're involved with, it includes 15 other agencies, and we get grant money from the Burn Grant to help pay and fund some of these investigations. Because of heroin being such, or methamphetamine being such a big problem, there was the camp grant that was out there for $30,000 that the task force received. So that money would be used for any investigations where officers or investigators had to do those sorts of investigations that we can be reimbursed for. And then, a couple of crime reports that we had over the last month, back in February, there's a pretty hefty fraud complaint during the month where a victim was scammed out a large, a large amount of money, and that was through one of the social dating websites. And again, I just caution everybody that if somebody is calling and are asking you to get a Visa gift card and provide those numbers to them and give the security code, please do not do that. Contact us, and we can assist you so you don't fall victim to becoming, you know, from that crime. And then, we also had a stolen vehicle that got recovered over in Fox Crossings, and that person, we know who it is, and those charges were submitted to the district attorney's office. And the last thing is, we, unfortunately, we had the passing of William Red Carlson, and we did receive a thank you card from them. We had an officer that stood, that stood by during the service. So that's all that I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Chief, anybody have any questions? Good memories of Red Carlson growing up in our town. All of you that have been here that long will remember him, for sure. Thank you. Josh, are you going to come out or just speak through your microphone there? He took his name tag with him, too, so he might not be...
I get kicked out of mine.
I know the mayor brought the iPads in front of you, and I think at a future meeting, we can probably demo those when maybe more of us are here, and I wasn't sure if we're going to be spread out tonight or not. But if you want to play with them, instructions are there, go for it. Long-term plan, when things are back to normal, normal, we'll release ownership of the laptops. You can keep them, and these are going to replace them, and all the committees and groups that meet in here will be able to utilize the same technology, so. Before we give you those laptops, keep if anyone goes, mine's really slow, I'd be willing to take a look at it and speed it up or get it a little more up to date. Wapaka Online side of things, there are a couple potential projects coming up. We received some preliminary news this week that one grant related to an expansion has been approved, so we'll have more details on that soon. I'm waiting to learn more before getting into all the details on that, because there's a couple moving parts on that, but we're excited about that. The other grant that's out there, we still don't have news on. Going to be looking at increasing some staffing, and we're looking at some minor changes to our pricing structure, and that's going to be in relation to one of the projects we're heading into. So nothing with current pricing going up or down, but we've got to add another tier to fit into one of these projects. My IT side of things, assist at the Park and Rec Department, or they assist at me, vice versa, putting some cameras in at Riverside Park, the shelter they just, we worked down there, so we want, they want to get some cameras in there just in case there's any issues. Did a major server replacement here with all of our general government servers past couple of weeks, and that was pretty much done as of Monday. And working on this year's annual computer replacement, and that's nearing the end. Just got a couple more things to swap out and get done, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Josh. Any comments or questions for Josh? Guys fight nice. Okay, now I know it's different here. You two are on the wrong side.
You finally figured it out.
Which works great, though. Sandy, you're up next.
Okay, thank you. My report can be found on pages 19 and 20. This morning, my office mailed out 369 absentee ballots, and absentee voting in office, or actually in the hallway between the city hall and library, will begin on March 23rd. And we still need an alderperson for Aldermanic District 5, so if anybody is interested that lives in that district, wards 5 and 10, please get ahold of me, and I will give you some information how to run as a write-in. My office has been reviewing and preparing the required documents for the city's new licensing software. Software, it's called Dude Solutions, and our deadline for completion of that is March 31st. And also, back on February 18th, I attended the Wapaka County Emergency Management Tabletop Exercise. The topic was energy, fueling, and infrastructure, long-term power outage. And it was, it was very interesting, and Justin was there as well, as well as Steve Fenske, who's sitting in the back. So if you have any technical questions, please ask one of them, because I was kind of a last-minute attendance, so. And that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions, comments for Sandy? All right, Aaron, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So I want to touch on some surface-level administrative things here as a part of my March report. The CDA meeting that was scheduled on March 10th had to be rescheduled due to some unexpected circumstances with the presenters, that they couldn't be there kind of last minute, so we'll look forward to rescheduling that. We're going to set those CDA meetings at a consistent date. We were setting it as needed when applications came in. It's kind of getting to be a little clunky trying to coordinate everyone's schedules. So we're looking for a consistent date, and if we don't have applications on that month, we'll just cancel it for that month. So we'll let council know when that happens. CD grant, you guys actually passed two resolutions on this, but that did get submitted by our grant writer, Greg. He worked hard with Andrew Dane and the applicant point housing to get that in, and I know he got some good comments from John Barts from the WEDC on the quality of the grant, so we're hoping that that results in a large sum of money to go towards that project at 201, 203 North Main Street. Then that would supplement the $40,000 already approved through the CDA, and really could be that showcase caliber project for the downtown business incentive program. So we'll let you know when we hear hopefully good news on that. Obviously, all those are competitive processes. Special Plan Commission meetings, we've got a kind of a wacky schedule here for Plan Commission coming up. We have elections in the first week of April. That's going to push our council meeting to the 7th instead of the 6th, so that means we've got to reschedule Plan Commission, so we're looking at Wednesday, March 31st for that, at 5:15. And then we also have a, right now, I'll communicate with everyone on Plan Commission from an email standpoint, but possibly an April 14th Special Plan Commission meeting. There's a couple of business proposals that are looking to expedite, and how that impacts May, we'll let you know. But we'll be in touch to make sure it works for Plan Commissioners if we move forward. HR training, want to thank Kathy's office and Jerry Allen, our new deputy treasurer, for working through this with me. It's been on the back burner for a decent amount of time, most of 2020, but looking to update some of our annual HR training for staff. Jerry was able to look through one of our resources, which is Think HR. It's free to the city, but they have some really good videos that we can assign to our staff. You can see code of ethics, reporting fraud, workplace harassment, diversity training. That diversity training is a new one, so that is something we'll be looking to have staff log on and go through on an annual basis, and they'll be getting more information in the upcoming weeks. Ruby's Pantry, just wanted to talk about now a couple of visible things, and you'll hear about one later in this meeting. Ruby's Pantry, just to give everyone an idea of where we're at with that, at the Churney site on Fulton Street. So they've been through a site plan application under the new Fulton Street Corridor Overlay District. That has been through Plan Commission meeting. That is step one of two steps in their process. They're also looking at a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, for distribution center. They can't officially apply to that until April 20th, so we would expect a application to come in on April 21st. And from there, the timeline runs really through June 15th. That'd be the approval at a council meeting on a regular timeline for a conditional use permit to get approved. Now, having said all that, there is, they cannot be doing any alterations or updates within that building from an addition standpoint. We were not going to give building permits until that CUP gets finalized on June 15th. However, in these types of instances, we do allow for some demo work as long as it's been approved through the planning, through the plan process, and we make sure that none of it's been, none of it's structural, so we don't want them obviously to tear down a wall that could pose a safety hazard. Jane, our commercial building inspector, has reviewed that, has given the okay for some demo stuff on the interior, so if you see some activity, that's what's happening in between now and June 15th. Obviously, you guys will see the rest of it as it comes through. Lastly, a couple more visible things, and you'll hear about the old Pizza Hut development. It'll get talked about later in this meeting, so I won't go into that. Also, actually, received an application for the old ShopCo space, and a conditional use permit came in for that, so we're going to look to have that discussed at the April. That would be one of the April 14th, that additional Plan Commission meeting that we discuss. And then also, staff, our CED, our Community Economic Development Team, as staff, were able to sit down with Green Tree Construction after the last development agreement went through at the council meeting for those 29 new homes, get our processes in line to make sure, you know, 29 homes, we've got to make sure we're on the ball, and it's in everyone's best interest to get those up and moving and get people in them, so our staff has done great with that. I also want to, real quickly, just say thank you, Sandy, for stepping in on that, and Justin, on that tabletop exercise with Mr. Fenske and Emergency Management. And I also want to say, as we get close here to the Main Street project, Justin has been working his butt off, doing a really good job communicating with a multitude of different groups, and Josh has been helping him through those avenues, so just wanted to mention that. Other than that, Mayor, that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions or comments for Aaron? All right, let's go into unfinished business, then. We have ordinance number 032021. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and this is a second reading. So we did see this at our last meeting. I know Andrew Dane, you got your name on this. Do you want to make any comments, and maybe you could tell us if you've got any comments from the public since that, since the last meeting?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did not, I really didn't, haven't made any significant, really any changes since the last meeting. I think at the last meeting, I had shared that there were a couple property owners that had reached out and had suggested some changes, which we didn't have any issues with. So really, nothing's changed since the last reading, and we're ready to, I guess, move forward and start implementing this plan for the future. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to hear them.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Anybody have any questions or comments for Andrew? Yes, go ahead.
So, Andrew, I'd first of all like to say that the introduction is really, really awesome, and I had it printed so I could read it, not just on the computer, but go through and read it. And it was like a step back when we were planning, and that was really neat. You know, I will say, I'm always going to be very cautious about the Fulton Street Corridor to make sure that it is safe for everybody, and keeping track of that to make sure that Ruby's Pantry is looked at every way possible. And I keep getting reassured that it will be. And then the other thing that I thought was interesting, talking about the Kmart, that that'd be a great site for Walmart, and I was wondering if that is back, if the plan for Walmart is back.
Well, that's a, that's a great, I would let maybe Erin address that one.
I got, yep, I got it, Andrew. So, good question, Lori. I think one thing we heard maybe more than anything when we had the big community meeting at the Dane's Home prior to the pandemic, was we saw Wapaka needs some sort of large retail option. It was right after Kmart and Shopko had left. You know, Walmart specifically, I can't speak to that because it's not something we're actively in conversations with, but you know, I think staff does believe that the community would like to see that option in Wapaka. And I know Andrew and I are certainly having conversations on how do we bring that type of perceived need to the area. So it's a long game. It's tougher than you may think.
People get so excited when they see that, you know.
But let's get back onto the ordinance, though, here. I'm not sure that that qualifies for discussion on the ordinance, but maybe under your discussion earlier. But yeah, thank you, Erin, for the... Anybody else have any questions or comments? Anybody like to make a motion to approve the ordinance? I'll move that.
Second, Martin.
Yeah, we got a motion by Keeland, second by Martin, that we adopt ordinance number 032021. It's an ordinance to amend the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Any discussion? Say no, color roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, let's go to new business, then. And Sandy, we got your name on this, but I know we have a couple of guests here tonight to talk about it. But this is License Report Number 1531, and this has to do with temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages for the Wapaka Area Fire District, and they're calling it the WAFD Sesquicentennial Celebration. Huh? Not bad. I practiced in the mirror. Okay, so Sandy, you want to set it up and then introduce the Fenskes?
Well, Steve and Deb Fenske are both here, and it looks like Steve's going to talk. They're planning the celebration at Swan Park, and they would like to have a band and have beer and fermented malt beverages, and I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Smith, members of the common council, guests, and public viewing tonight. First, I just wanted to start off with a little bit of history lesson. So back on May 11th of 1871, the Wapaka Fire Company was formed, 14 years after the founding of Wapaka. The Fire Company was split into two separate groups at that time, which were the Hook and Ladder Company and the Hose Company. The first official members, elected officials, were George Hollitt, who was elected the foreman, which today we call the chief. H.C. Mumbru was the chief engineer. Willis Wheeler was the foreman of the Hose Company, and Joe Woodworth of WoodNorth was the first assistant foreman, which again, we call the Assistant Fire Chief. And then a couple other people, secretary treasurers, that were also elected. And then G. Dumbia Palmer, who was also elected, was elected to take care of the engine and the horses at that time. The department had uniforms that were bought, and they were to be worn at all meetings and celebrations, and we actually have some of the official ledgers dating back to the early, the meeting minutes, dating back to the early years of the fire department at the station. They were charged 10 cents a person if they did not wear their uniform at the meeting. So luckily, we don't have that today. So May 11th of this year, 2021, it marks the 150th anniversary, or as Mayor Smith said, the Sesquicentennial. I've trained my tongue to say that and roll off the tongue very nicely, for the Wapaka Fire Department. And that's a milestone event for the Wapaka Fire Department. So we started planning this already back almost a year and a half ago with coming up with ideas, what we wanted to do, until we finally got it narrowed down to where we are looking at now. We've got many activities being planned to celebrate this milestone event, which we are tentatively holding or planning for on May 22nd of this year. The day's going to begin with a parade of fire apparatus, old and new, from fire departments throughout the state of Wisconsin. We have commitment from the professional firefighters of Wisconsin Aragard to lead off that parade, carrying the colors, as well as providing bagpipe music and drummers leading off the parade, which is something that is going to be quite spectacular that we've never seen in this area. After the parade, the rest of the festivities will be at Swan Park. The official ceremony is going to be kicked off with guest speakers, both Mayor Smith and Administrator Jensen have agreed to be some of our guest speakers, along with several other people. And then from the rest of the day, we've got music all day long. We've got three bands lined up. As Sandy had mentioned, we're going to have food, refreshments, kids' activity, adults' activities, some live demonstrations, so a full, full day of activity, starting at about 10 o'clock on Saturday and ending at about midnight. We've worked with Chief Hozell on a parade route, which should be in your packet. And again, like I said, we've got lots of activities going on. The best thing about this is there's not going to be any admission charge for it. It is going to be a free event for the entire Wapaka community. The only cost will be for refreshments and food that they will pay for, but no admission for the bands or anything like that. And that's all thanks to the many sponsors in our community, which we were overwhelmed with. We had over 46 businesses in our community help us provide funds for sponsoring this entire event. So tonight, we're here, both Deb and I. Deb has been working with Erin on all of our permits, and that's why we are here tonight, to bring the permits forward to the common council for consideration for approval. Deb? Your turn.
Okay. Wow, it's good to see you guys.
In person.
In person, yes. I haven't been down here in a while. We're getting excited. This is coming up really quick. And what I wanted to explain on the Class B liquor license, the reason that we have it, I had it on here, from Friday, the 21st through the 23rd, is set up and take down, and also, the beer distributor wouldn't deliver on Friday unless there was a liquor license.
Right.
So that's why it is, I have it for the entire weekend. The other thing that I wanted to mention, let's see, the dance, the parade, I know it's a parade permit, but did that need to be approved at all? Because that's not on here.
Africa.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I had, unless anyone has any questions. Oh, and we know that we have to have licensed bartenders onsite, and right now, we have two and, three?
Three.
Okay. So I will be coming in to pay for those people. I want to give it at least another, maybe a month, if that's okay, just to see how many we're going to have, and then I'll come in and pay for all of them. Okay?
Yeah, and if anybody wants to find out anymore about the activities and the whole history of the fire department, we do have a special site on our website. It's wapakafire.org org, and at the top, there's a thing on there that says 150th Celebration. So we didn't put Sesquicentennial. It took up too much in the menu space, so. But we've got our schedule of events, our history, our sponsors, and everything else that's happening that day. So we're looking forward to it. We're working, no, Chief Duman is in close communication with county public health, and we're taking this, you know, week by week to see how things are going. So we're hoping that things happen, you know, the way we're hoping it does, and that we can still proceed with this event on the 22nd of May. So.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions or comments for them? You know, I would have said 150 years if I knew what Sesco's like. Would have been easier.
Well, in 50 years, you can just say bicentennial, then, so.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the license report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Pritchardsky, that we approve License Report Number 1531. Any discussion? This is just a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much for the time tonight. Thank you very much. We hope to see everybody on the 22nd.
You know, this is one of those things where you should, Erin, we should contact Josh and see if we can't get the Fenskes or whoever else on our TV sites and stuff like that, too. This would be a perfect one to promote.
Yeah, and I've been working with Josh and been talking with him to, we'll get some information as we get a little bit closer here. We got a meeting tomorrow night to hopefully start finalizing some things and solidifying our schedule, but working with him and getting some stuff on Wynn TV and Wapaka Radio as well.
Oh, one more thing.
Oh.
I know we are going to be asking for volunteers from the different organizations in the Wapaka area, so anybody listening, if you would like to volunteer, please contact the fire department. We definitely are going to need a lot of help. If you have any questions also, please contact them, and we are meeting every Wednesday at the fire station until the event.
Actually, there'll be a site on the website for people to sign up to be volunteers as well, so.
All right, sounds good.
May I ask one question? This doesn't have anything to do with this. Justin, this was just a question I had for you. During the Main Street project, will you be sending out Code Red messages, like usually, like if there's something going on? Because they are very beneficial.
We were using Constant Contact for our routine messages. We would use Code Red for an emergency or urgent situation.
Okay. Great, thanks.
We have one more item that has to do with this event, and it's just the dance hall license that they're requesting, and this is License Report Number 1532, so we would need a motion to approve that. I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by, I'm sorry, who said second? Lori, by Chestnut, that we approve License Report Number 1532. This is a dance hall license for May 22nd, 2021. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Again, good luck.
Thank you.
I got a question. I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't see the parade route in here. What is the parade route?
I, oh, you didn't have, it wasn't attached?
No.
Okay, I sent it along, but here is the parade route.
So basically, what the parade is going to start, because we do, my goal is to have 150 fire apparatus. It's a big goal, but that's what we're shooting for. So we're starting with staging and everything at the Wapaka Middle School Learning Center, just because there's a lot of area there for large apparatus. From there, it'll go out, it'll turn out of Riverside, not Riverside, Shoemaker, thank you. We'll turn right, go down Churchill Street to the intersection, a left on Royalton down to school, and then Badger Street, and we'll end at Main Street. At that point, the fire departments that show up, they can go whatever way they want to go, or they can continue to come out to South Park then, too. So, and I think we're just looking at doing one lane? So, I mean, if you want to...
It would be similar to, if you remember when we have the Special Olympics, when they come through in the summertime, it'd be something very similar to that as to what we do, because they will all be emergency vehicles. We're not going to shut the opposite lane of traffic down. It'll just be a continuous flow, and then we'll have officers at intersections when needed to assist. So that's what the plan is.
And we're not planning on having anybody throwing candy. There's not any marching bands or anything like that. The only music will be the bagpipe and drummers at the beginning of the parade.
Great.
All right.
Eric, I did volunteer South State Street for them to test their sirens as they were coming into town.
I'm going to check that off.
Me and the grandkids will be waiting.
So did you want to do a silent parade?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks. All right, let's go to License Report 1533. This is an operator's license, or as we know it is, the bartender's license. You have one name on there. We just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, Martin.
Motion by Fair, second by Martin, that we approve License Report 1533. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Awesome. Let's move on, then. I don't know why I said that, but let's go on to the Main Street Construction Project Borrow Approval, and Justin, I got your name on here. I'm thinking you're going to need, you're getting help from Kathy on this, too.
Hopefully, I can get through it without her assistance, but certainly, she's here to support me. She does a great job and has, well, basically, we set this budget up many years ago, and this is a large project. Without her financial knowledge, it would be difficult to see us sitting here requesting so much money for this tremendous project. So this is, Main Street is a project DOT-led, WISDOT STP fund, which means that it is their, we're following their rules. We have an SMA, which is a state municipal agreement, which means that it details who is doing what as far as financials, and also the responsibilities during the project. Since this was a WISDOT project, it fell underneath their advertisement and bid receivable and submittal. I got listed on there all the bids that were received. You can see that Gerkey Excavating was low. They were here in town at the preconstruction and the public information meeting, which means WISDOT has already awarded the project to Gerkey. They are a pre-approved qualified bidder. WISDOT, or Department of Transportation, has, you know, high standards for companies that work for them, such as their quality work and also their financial standing. So they are very qualified to do this. I'm here now asking for approval because our procurement ordinance says anything over $25,000 requires council approval. So this is, so far, what I've said is pretty much nothing new, other than just looking for the authorization for the various borrow funds. At the bottom of the first page of my memo, which... At the bottom of the first page of my memo, which is on 191 by the way, uh, you can see what we budgeted. Uh, so we're receiving 1.7 million, uh, from the WISDOT share. We were planning to borrow slightly over a million in geo-bonds, 425 out of the sewer revenue and then 475 out of water revenue. The bids that were received shows a slightly different picture. Um, our increment from WISDOT increased to 1.9. Uh, our bids were very competitive, which means our need to borrow for general obligations reduced, uh, quite a bit and the sewer was a very good bid and the water was pretty close. Uh, so we budgeted for 3.7, our project that would require 3.7 million dollars. Uh, what we're actually getting is something just a touch over 3.5. These numbers that are in that table that I just described also include, uh, construction, engineering, administration and inspection. Uh, since this is a WISDOT process, uh, WISDOT will be providing the oversight on the roadway items, which means the ones that qualify for the 80/20 split. They hired a firm named, uh, Quest Engineering. Um, we however, need to provide oversight on all the other items that are 100% city-funded, so non-eligible WISDOT ones. So the oversight for the sewer and water installation, um, I'm looking for approval to contract with SEH. Of course, they're the ones that did the design, uh, and walked us through this entire project. Uh, their, um, their effort on this, they, they will need to provide the surveying and layout of the utilities. Uh, we do not have that capability. Um, WISDOT will be doing that for their items, we need to do it for our items. Uh, also, the inspector from SEH will help us handle all the administrative items. Um, the WISDOT process is very, uh, heavy on the paperwork. I know it was what I did in my past job, so when we're done with this thing, our file cabinet will probably increase by like this much. Um, the, so this inspector will handle any shop drawing inspections, uh, material testing, certifications, uh, measurements and help with the estimates during the project. Um, in a project of this size, uh, we would really appreciate the help on this. Uh, normally our projects, we rotate between myself, Roger, Mark and other public work staff. We do not have quite the requirements that WISDOT has as well. So attached to the memo, at the end there is, uh, a breakdown from SEH of, uh, the effort they would, they're requiring to help us with the sewer and water and then also, uh, electrical upgrade, which is something new. So the sewer and water, we, we knew we'd have to, uh, undertake some sort of effort with that SMA that I just described. The electrical upgrade is new. So since we, um, received good bids and we talked about how we had some savings, um, there was some talk of what could we bring back for street enhancements, this would provide two, uh, street enhancements in the future. So what this electrical upgrade is gonna do is add additional conduit and wiring underneath the ground to our street lights. Um, and then we will be able to add security cameras at the intersections and then also speakers, uh, throughout the downtown, uh, which, working with this downtown planning group, uh, has been identified as like one of the big things they would really like to see. The thoughts are right now is we would use these speakers during special events, during holidays or for special announcements, uh, you know, Christmas, Fourth of July, uh, Strawberry Fest, Arts in the Square. Um, Josh Werner has done an excellent job supporting us on this, making sure that we can, we can do this and be licensed and legal that way. Uh, so we're working through that, but regardless, that takes, uh, extra design effort and then extra, uh, construction funding. On top of all that, uh, looking for a 20% contingency, um, we've done this on other larger projects, uh, you know, WISDOT projects oftentimes see change orders, um, and can, you know, a small change can add quite a significant cost on something that has a baseline of three and a half million. Um, like other projects, you know, we've, on our projects, we've, have sometimes identified improvements that we could make while we're there. Uh, we'd take a extra block of pavement and redo it. That's what Roger and I have done. Here, this is just for the unexpected, mainly just the change orders. So if we do not use it, obviously, it just kinda rolls over, um, and not that we're gonna max this project out if we can, so. So the action that I'm looking for is approval, um, for the various funds, uh, a million dollars for the 2020 general obligation bonds that would pay for the 80/20 split of the street items. Uh, it would also play, pay for the non-eligible street i- items and enhancements and the electrical upgrades. Then, funding from the, uh, 2020 sewer revenue bonds, uh, 375,000 and then funding from the 2020 water revenue bonds for 475,000.
Okay, thank you. Good ex, thank you, very good explanation, what we're trying to do here. So I appreciate that. So, um, I guess I'm trying to think through this, Sandy, are, are we, are we looking to get, uh, can we do all this in one motion since they're from three different funds? Or should we do it as three separate?
I think probably three.
Three separate motions?
Kathy, what would you need for your auditors and for your records?
I would need to have, uh, the approval to use the 2020 geo-bonds separate and then the sewer be together. Um, and then the, uh, approval to, uh, contract with SEH would be, um, the third motion. You need three motions?
Alright, well, let's do the SEH one first. So, uh, we would need a motion, if you guys are okay with this, to, uh, enter into, uh, an agreement with SEH.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve, uh, entering into an agreement with SEH, uh, to, uh, administrate, uh, parts that are not being done by Wisconsin Department of Transportation. And that amount, uh, it looks like it's like, uh, right around 90,000 is, or 92,000, is that, is that a fair number? So you don't, you're not counting the 8,800 then? Okay. That's something else?
Uh, oh shoot. What the heck was that?
Sorry, I didn't mean to throw a bone there.
Yeah, no, sorry about, no, I, I'm sorry mayor. It, the total is, um, 93,950.
Okay, so that would be a front amount, not to exceed 93,350. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut? Aye. Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Alright, and then next up, uh, we need, out of the general fund, we need to borrow, uh, an amount not to exceed 1 million dollars in 2020 general obligation bonds.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Fair, or second by Chestnut, that we approve, uh, a funding of, for the street, Main Street project of, an amount not to exceed 1 million dollars for 2020 general obligation bonds. And that does include the contingency in that part. All of these will. Right. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and then one more motion. This would be to borrow up to 375,000 dollars from the 2020 sewer revenue bonds and another 475,000 dollars from the 2020 water revenue bonds. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Move to approve, Martin.
Keeland, second.
Motion by Martin, second by Keeland, that we approve, uh, the sewer font, revenue bonds not to exceed 375,000 and the water revenue bonds, 2020 water revenue bonds not exceeding 475,000. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. I, I know this meeting's getting a little long here as we go, but I, can you just give a little bit of an update about your public meeting last week and just give the council and the public that's listening tonight, an update about the project?
Sure, sure. Well, we did a, a live on Facebook public information meeting, um, down here at the chamber. There was approximately 30 attendants, maybe a few more. Um, the people that were here in attendance was myself, uh, city administrator Aaron Jensen, uh, street superintendent Roger Hanson. We had the contractor from Gerke, we had a, a DOT personnel and then we also had an engineer from Quest. Um, we reviewed the project and, and basically how I explained the schedule was kind of the main driver, or the, the main message of letting everybody know it was gonna start on the 29th. We're gonna try and, uh, jump around a little bit with that Fulton Street intersection, but the point was to try and keep it open as much as possible, um, encourage people to sign up for that constant contact, um, email update. Um, what else came up? I don't know, what am I missing?
I think that's good. I think, um, the only other thing that maybe is important to mention is that, that is, can still be viewed, um, on our website.
Yes.
So if anybody does wanna recap that public information meeting, it's, uh, I know Josh has it posted on our website and you can contact us anytime too.
Yep. Our email and phone lines always open.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, uh, let's move on then, uh, to, we have a request for qualification and RFQ for a river, River North Sub Area Plan and Andrew, that comes back to you again, Andrew Dane.
Okay. I'm back in action here. Hopefully you can hear me and possibly even see me now. Um, and I'm just gonna take a couple minutes to introduce this, uh, assuming perhaps folks have not had a chance to look at this. Um, just a little bit of background, we did just adopt the update to the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, one of the key ingredients of that plan is the future land use map. Um, and one of the priorities of the city is, um, residential growth, keeping the school district healthy, um, continuing to add tax base within the city, um, and, uh, supporting, um, what I would call kind of sustainable growth opportunities here within the, within the city limits, um, um, in, in many cases. As we went through the future land use plan, we identified, uh, future land use map. We did identify some areas that we thought, uh, maybe had some, uh, more potential than, uh, um, opportunities for, for growth and certainly where there's opportunities to do infill, um, it presents, it's very attractive for cities because it can be a pretty cost-effective way to, to support new development, um, without the need to, to extend, uh, sewer and water out through the annexation process. And as we went through this process, um, looking at some of the assets in the community, looking, uh, specifically looking at, kind of taking advantage of that, um, 22 bypass and the proximity to the, um, employment base as well as the proximity to US Highway 10, the Business Technology Park, um, popped out as, as perhaps an opportunity to revisit that area and through some, uh, a little bit more focused planning and study, um, come up with a little bolder vision for this area that, um, could help attract, uh, additional outside investments and, um, get people excited about investing in this area. And I would say, while we were doing this, um, we also happened to have, um, uh, at least two, um, larger investors, um, come to us that expressed interest in potentially doing projects out here, um, including one, um, residential, um, project that Aaron and I had, had some good conversations on, uh, with the, with the developer, uh, as well as, uh, more of a, of a, um, different non-residential use. And so, looking at this area and kind of looking out in the future, um, I thought it would be, um, in discussions with, with staff, you know, felt that this was a, a great opportunity to, um, come up with and do what I would call some sub-area planning. Um, and that is kind of taking a deeper dive into this, um, city area, coming up with maybe some, a look at what, uh, street network or grid might look like, identifying some, um, more focused, um, desirable land uses within this area. Currently, it's now just zoned industrial. Um, and so, um, really the thought is, you know, if we could engage, the ask, I guess, is to, um, to get, uh, approved, um, some funds up and I put the 15,000 dollars, um, to, to pay for some consultants to work with us over a period of two to three months to develop a land use, a more detailed land use plan for this property area, which then we can then go out to and, um, and, um, talk to developers and investors, um, and, uh, folks both within the community and outside the community that may wanna invest in this area but are perhaps a little unsure or hesitant to do so, cause they don't really know the direction or the overall vision the city's looking to go, go with here. So that's a little bit of the background. I did talk to Kathy and, um, she, um, indicated to me that she thought, um, that this actually is a pretty good year to do planning type of activities in this TIF district, not a good year to try to borrow a bunch of money and do a bunch of infrastructure out here or do any, um, TIF deals here because of the, the way the TIFs are set up. But she said this would be a good, uh, time to do some planning like this and that those funds could be appropriated through those, um, through those TIFs through, for professional service purposes. And, um, so I'm just, uh, yeah, I was proposing, um, again, I don't think this really needs to be a super, uh, I don't envision this being as, as detailed of a, of a plan as say what you did for downtown. Um, in fact, um, there could be some limited opportunities for some, you know, stakeholder involvement, I think, especially with the landowners that are out there, but since, um, this isn't really sitting smack dab in the middle of the residential neighborhood, um, I meant, you know, in some cases, in some ways, we're kind of looking at how do we kind of build off of the energy and investment that's already happening out there, uh, organically and, uh, try to shape this area into a, a little more productive asset for the city. And so, um, I think with that, I'm gonna stop talking and see if anyone has questions.
Anybody have any questions? Everybody understands where, what we're talking about, right? Where, where we're at there. Obviously, we purchased this land, uh, you know, about 25 years ago with the idea that we were chasing a, 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 a big manufacturer that was looking at coming to our community and that never did come to fruition and, so we put a lot of infrastructure into this and although we've had some growth out there, it, it hasn't been growing as fast as we would hope so. So, I think, uh, 15,000 to put towards this to try and help improve that marketability of that makes a lot of sense, really. So...
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for that additional background mayor. I did, I kind of missed the big picture here and what I really wanted to say before I started talking like a planner, is that I actually think this area could be a really desirable neighborhood. neighborhood. I think you have all the ingredients for a new neighborhood here. You've got a river, you've got trails, you've got, you've got some employment opportunities nearby, you've got good transportation access, you've got some daycare, you've got some, I think there's a gymnastics place out there, you've got some educational resources out there, an office building, and so I actually think it's, it's a really exciting opportunity to, to create a, a new neighborhood and maybe rebrand this into a desirable neighborhood within the city.
All right, awesome. So what Andrew is asking for is a request to go out for RFQs here and to use up to 15,000 to, to get that done. Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Chestnut, was it? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. That we approve the request to go out for qualifications or an RFQ for the River North sub-area plan. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin? Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Again. All right, next up, we have a conditional use permit for Aquapaw LLC 1080 West Fulton Street, and Aaron's going to take this over. I'm going to probably take some of their hooray away from here, but if you look at their name, it's supposed to be Willpaca spelled backwards, but they spelled Willpaca wrong backwards. And he admitted it, he laughed at it, so I'll just toss him that at you. So Aaron, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith, and I'm just going to set this up. I do believe we have Jeff Sanders, who's our zoning administrator, who works specifically with our conditional use permit applications. Again, this is a redevelopment of the old Pizza Hut site. John and Adam are on here to speak about that, if you guys have any questions. But before I talk anymore, I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Sanders. And Jeff, if you can hear me, you can take it away and explain the, the need for the conditional use permit here.
Long clear, Aaron, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the common council, and everybody else in attendance. So what we have is a proposed coffee shop at the former Pizza Hut structure at 1080 West Fulton Street. As you'll notice on page two of the application, or excuse me, page two of the report, coffee, tea, juice, and smoothie shops, restaurants, drive-in, and restaurants, fast food, are conditional uses in the B4 district, which is what is the date of the conditional use permit. The applicants came before a planning commission early this month for, actually it was the last month, apology, last month, for a site plan to be unapproved. And my recommendations appear on the last page of the report, page three. Presumably those recommendations are before you, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have regarding my report or the proposal.
Jeff, I'm going to ask you to please go through the recommendations as a part of that report. This was a late addition, and it looks like the addendum got added, but not the report.
Yeah, it's on, it's on, it's on the website.
Okay.
Although I don't think it hurts for you to go through those pretty quickly because you do have a, a list of those. I can tell you the recommendations, and we probably should let them speak for themselves, but they were, the, the developers are, were okay with all the recommendations, but, yeah. So if you look in your addendum packet, you guys, if you go back and pull up the addendum, you'll find that, I know all of you are looking at us strange here, but Aaron's got it up on the screen now too, so.
Is this sharing correctly for anyone that's joining us virtually? Can you guys see the staff report now? Okay, perfect.
We could, we cannot, Aaron, at least I can't hear.
Okay, well.
Quick, hold on, this should be a quick fix.
I can see it, Aaron.
Oh, okay.
Just Jeff, he's got his, he's using an apple, so, yeah.
All right.
I was a troublemaker.
Yep.
Well, so the recommendations for conditions to be placed upon the permit are that all the site improvements agreed upon under the site plan that I mentioned a few moments ago shall be maintained throughout the duration of the use, that deliveries are allowable on a 24-hour basis, but any deliveries between the hours of 10 o'clock PM and 7:00 AM shall abide by a provision against loud and disturbing levels of noise. All chronic material storage shall occur within this, there's no exterior storage allowed, the exception to that certainly isn't storage, but the refuse area that, where the dumpsters will be located is screen. Property shall be maintained free from the accumulation of trash and debris, and that's something pretty common with any sort of fast food restaurant. You know, people tend to walk out and sometimes spend the extra stuff to get some trash or something. And then the last three are basically the conditions that would be placed upon any conditional use permit. So if there's any change in the use of the property, if there's the addition of any new structures or significant, significant additions to existing structures, that the conditional use permit may be amended. And then finally, the conditional use permit is valid as long as the use is maintained compliant with the zoning order.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, for that. We do have on with us, as I said earlier, we have John Hallbrow and Adam Stein. Sorry if I messed up your last name there, John, but would, would either one of you like to make some comments?
I just wanted to say real quick, I, I think you guys did a great job. Thank you for, you know, introducing the project. I don't have anything necessarily to add, other than we're very eager to get started. We're very appreciative of all the work that staff has put in, and the relationships that we've built thus far, so we're anxious to get started, and if you guys have any questions specifically for us, we're happy to answer.
This is John, right? I'm thinking?
Correct.
Yeah, John, hey, so this is your time for some free marketing and advertising. You want to just explain your timeline a little bit and what your project is?
Sure. The tenant that we're working with is obviously, as most tenants are eager to get, to get into Willpaca and get open, our intended timeline would be to finish our engineered construction drives in the next couple, few weeks, cement those for permits, collect our permits, get our bids, and hopefully be in the ground under construction sometime in May. That would put a turnover to the tenant, hopefully sometime in the September timeframe, and then an opening probably in October of this year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody want to ask some questions? All right, so what we're looking for is an approval of, of the conditional use permit for this, for this property. Anybody like? Go ahead.
I was just going to move to approve it.
Thank you. Motion by Chestnut, second by?
Second, Keeland.
Keeland, that we approve issuing, issuing a conditional use permit for Aquapaw LLC, which is at 1080 West Fulton Street, which we all know as the former Pizza Hut building. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, John.